All right, council, we have two items on the agenda tonight for our city council conference. The first is a discussion regarding establishing a visitability pilot program for new construction of one and two family dwellings and townhouses with less than four units. I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. First off, I want to thank all of you for serving on council, both as an employee and as a citizen in Norman. It can be tough, I bet.
Thank you.
Really do thank you. So, yeah, we have two items here, and they're both pilot programs. One's a visibility program, one is the HERS ERI program. They're not really tied together, but I will ask, you want me to make both presentations? And then, do you want me to pause in between the two of them?
I'd like to pause because visibility is our newer one.
Okay.
And we've got new council members here as well.
Sure, sure. So, a little background on visibility versus accessibility. A lot of people hear the term accessibility, and they might think one thing, and visibility is actually quite different. I provided a few little definitions. Visible dwelling unit, if you will, offers a few specific features to make a home easier for a mobility impaired person to live in and visit. Accessibility is a little more robust in that the intent of accessible dwelling, if you will, is to allow a person with physical disabilities to independently get to, enter, and then use that facility. And that's really the kind of the key word used. An accessible dwelling, if you will, would be accommodating for somebody to get to the building and visit, you know, and perform, you know, basic, have basic needs kind of thought of. An accessible dwelling unit would go a step further. It would allow an occupant who lives in the house to live there long-term, day-to-day, and be comfortable with all the conditions. There are some distinct similarities, and there's some differences between the two. Both visitable and accessible dwelling units, they have to have a compliant entry. You know, you could have steps or high slopes, things of that nature. Both building types will have similar features. Both routes in an accessible dwelling versus a visible dwelling, you're going to have, you know, paths that are 36-inch wide, doors with a minimum clearance of 31 and 3/4. So, again, the building blocks are there in both a visible unit and an accessible unit. We start to see some differences between the two concepts when we start digging a little bit deeper. Like a bathroom, for example. In a visible bathroom, you'd have to have a toilet and a sink with some backing and clearances. But the accessible dwelling, it would actually ask you to have the same toilet and sink, but it would also want bathing accommodations, and it would want clearances for all three fixture types. A visible dwelling, really, you'd only have to have the clearances at the toilet, the water closet, as we call it. So, a little bit of difference there. A visible kitchen, primary interest in a visible kitchen is that a person visiting the home could, you know, get to the home, make it through the kitchen, could, you know, turn around, you know, be served there, hang out there a little bit if they wanted to. An accessible kitchen, we'd have a number of features. The appliances would have to be accessible, the reach ranges would have to be accessible, the heights of the counters would be a little bit more regulated. So, again, accessibility becomes more robust. In both the visible unit and accessible unit, you'd have to have a place a person would want to hang out, if you will. So, in a visible unit, they actually define that as, one room in that visible dwelling has to be 70 square foot or bigger. And that the purpose of that room would basically, again, just be a common use. A living room, game room, maybe a dining room. Accessible dwelling, really, the entire ground floor, for sure, would all have to be accessible. The bedrooms, laundry rooms, you know, really every room on that floor. So, again, way more robust. The last item I kind of chose to highlight was a lot of the switches, electrical thoughts, if you will. So, in a visible unit, it's going to, again, regulate that, you know, switches need to be within a certain height, the maximum height for reach distances. But if it was an accessible dwelling, you know, not only would those lighting controls and outlets be regulated, but your thermostat would be regulated, the electrical panel for the house would be regulated, security controls would all also be regulated. So, that's a little bit of background, a little bit of differences between the two. You know, a little bit of history here. This started in the January of 19. There was a citizen ad hoc committee for accessible housing met. And I'll stop just a moment and pause and thank those people. If it wasn't for that committee, we probably wouldn't be sitting here having this discussion today. And there was a lot of citizens in Norman who chose to engage in that, and that was definitely a part of the process that we'd like. And so, they met, they drafted this ordinance up, this visitable code, if you will. They presented it at the May 2019 CPT meeting, and they provided copies to staff, to council, and everybody in attendance then. And, you know, their general ask at the meeting was that we take it, review it, compare it to current building codes, practices, other visitable codes, and then follow up on it at a later time. And so, that meeting kind of concluded with the thought that this would be picked up at a, you know, future city council retreat. We last met about this at the last CPT meeting a couple of weeks back, and we had, I thought we had a good discussion about theirs. A little bit about current visibility codes that we have. I'll spend a little more time here because this kind of is relevant to the HERS ERI discussion. And there's a lot of new faces, as I understand. So, codes in Oklahoma are adopted at the state level, okay? And so, there's a group called the Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission, and they adopt the codes for the entire state. They essentially tell the city of Oklahoma City, the city of Moore, city of Norman, this is the minimum code you will adopt and enforce. And so, we get a lot of lead from them. So, when they adopt a code, they have a board, and when that board makes a recommendation, the recommendation goes into the legislator. The legislator can choose to act on it or choose to not act on it. If they don't act on it, the governor then gets to choose to act on it or not act on it. And so, if either one of those components chooses to act on it, it then becomes the minimum code for the state. And so, Norman, you know, we follow that process as well. The state will adopt a code. Shortly after they adopt a code, they give us a timeline to then adopt it as well. And we've always followed suit, as pretty much every jurisdiction has. It's kind of a good process. It helps a lot of us in the code community, you know, that Norman has a code, Oklahoma City has a code. Kind of a lot, but that's nor here nor there. So, a part of that adoption, the current code we work with is the International Building Code, the IBC. And referenced in the IBC is a document called the ICCA 117 dot 1 2009 standard for accessible buildings and uses. And this is the code that we use every day when we do our plan review or we do our inspections. It's kind of our baseline, what we work with. And it's a good document because they're in companion. The folks that work with the IBC and the people that write the accessibility code, they are always conferencing together, so when they update one, they're trying to update the others. So, the two codes really work part and parcel. So, it's a good, it's a good process. So, the currently adopted standard for Norman is this ICCA 117 standard. It gets updated generally every six years, although there can be a little variation. But generally, about every six years, they adopt, they have a tendency to update that code. One of the new sections that was put out in the 2009 version was a standard that was titled Type C Visitable Units. And so, with that document, they actually gave us a baseline, how to build a visitable unit, which was something the prior additions did not have. Another good thing about the ICC standard is it also, you know, is scope for really all things accessibility, but it also does include dwelling units as well. So, say we adopt the program, you decide to adopt the program, and then the futures decided, you know, we'd like to maybe expand the program to an accessible unit instead of just a visitable unit. We'd actually already have a document in place and a reference kind of built in already that we could go to and reference and use for those kinds of thoughts. So, after considering, you know, the Norman visibility that was drafted, and, you know, the current status of the codes and these new sections on these Type C units, our recommendation was to start a pilot program using the ICC standard, specifically the Type C section out of the accessibility code. Again, it's a proven standard. It works great with the codes we already have. You know, and like if we wrote a code ourselves, it's unlikely to have any conflicts or have any kind of omissions or, you know, leave out a scenario we weren't thinking about when we wrote it. And it's updated regularly and reflects the other code. So, again, maintaining it's going to be simplified, too. So, if the national code changes... We want to update it to new thoughts, new considerations, you know, if it are to be written for us. So, if we're, you know, changing other code adoption, it would be easy enough just to simply change a reference and update that standard as well. And again, with having a visible standard and an accessible standard, there is potential to expand in the future as well. We also recommended that, you know, we consider this pilot program for two years, which maybe is a little bit longer than other programs of this nature. But kind of our experience with those other programs is we think this longer duration is going to help. It's going to let us as staff, you know, get the framework put in place, you know, in a nice manner. It's going to allow us to educate builders, educate the public, people building about visitability because a lot of people, I think, are going to hear that term and just immediately jump to accessibility and not know that, you know, really, you know, what we're asking here, the visible standard is, it is a lower threshold. You don't have to necessarily change the entire footprint. You don't have to change every detail. So, we think the extra year will be good in that it allows to, you know, comply more, compile more data. The proposed source of the credit would be the building permit fee. Our building permit fee is 14 cents per square foot of project area. That's all areas under the roof of the house. The example I gave you is a 2,000-square-foot home with a 400-square-foot garage. That would be 2,400 feet, and so, that would be a $336 building permit fee. And, you know, being that this is, you know, a need, we kind of view this as an all or nothing. You know, there wouldn't be partial credit. You wouldn't get partial credit for building the inside of your house visible, but the outside didn't meet it, meaning they had three stairs to walk up to an otherwise visible unit. It was either an all or nothing credit. Either they complied and they got 100% of the feedback, or they didn't comply and they get zero, which I think is a need considering the topic here. And the last little bullet on here, and this will bleed into the HERS discussion, HERS ERI program a little bit, is the source of this fee. Currently, the source of the fee for the HERS ERI program is also the building permit fee. And so, with that, I just felt like it needed to be stated that if someone was in the HERS program and they were also in the visibility program, really, there wasn't a scenario where they could, you know, achieve double the credit. They wouldn't be able to get 100% of this fee and 100% of that fee. You know, if they applied for both and for some reason they failed to, you know, comply with the visibility, they could still be eligible for the HERS ERI program. It wouldn't disqualify them from getting the other credit, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't, in a sense, reward them twice for the credit. So, that is just a very short presentation I have. Certainly happy to field any questions I can.
What is the timeline for implementation if we decide to move this forward tonight?
I believe it is on the next council, June here in two weeks.
So, when would we...
The 22nd.
So, would it be immediately?
Effective immediately.
Right, we're trying to get this on with HERS as he'll do the next presentation because it actually expires the end of June, so we want to bring it to...
Is there a comparable incentive? Because I don't want people to have to choose, hopefully they'll do both because they're good people, but choosing between the visitability and the more environmentally, you know, sustainability, is there a way to find a different kind of incentive?
You know, we looked and talked about different fee sources, and this was not my strong subject. So, I'm going to hand it over to your...
And it's something we actually talked about, hi, sorry, Beth Mucola, City Attorney's Office. It's something we talked about with HERS. It's very complicated when you start looking into rebates or refunds from the public funds. It's really not something that we felt comfortable with for HERS, which is why we landed on the permit fee, and it's a satisfaction. It's not a rebate, it's not a refund. They're just being allowed to satisfy it in that way. There were some questions about other fees that might be potential sources, but honestly, and as you all know extremely well, those fees go to very certain places. They are devoted to paying down certain debts and obligations. So, really, this is where we kind of felt comfortable starting with and seeing how it interacted with HERS as HERS was also going to evolve, as Mr. Clark, I think, is going to address next.
Any other questions? All right, next.
Doesn't he have the voice for books on tape?
Is that an offer there? Okay, so, the next topic, HERS and the ERI pilot program. A little bit of history on this one as well. This program was created to encourage energy efficient homes by offering credits to builders who build above residential energy code minimums. The program first started in 2018, and since then, it has been renewed four times. It is set to expire, as mentioned, June 30th of '21. I feel like we've had pretty good success with the program to date. Here's some of the numbers that relates to it. And again, these numbers are backdated to March 31st. I apologize for that, but we, at that time, we had 482 applicants in the program at that time. Of the 482, 67 of them withdrew from the program. There were different reasons the 67 withdrew. Some, in some cases, they weren't going to comply, and they got their tests back and they didn't build a good enough house. Other cases, it was a timing issue. They were, you know, racing to the finish line, and they wanted to, you know, get legal occupancy of the home, and they, you know, they were ready to close it out, but they still hadn't gotten all the testing back from their compliance report. So, they made the choice, if you will, to, you know, get the person in the home and withdraw from the program. Of the 482 at the time of this, 284 had actually completed the program and received a credit. Again, at the time of this, 131 of those were still in the program as of March 31st. And that number is, all these numbers have certainly grown since then. 157 of those paid a percentage of their fees, and I'll explain, you know, the payout here in a little bit, meaning they didn't get 100% of their building permit fee back, but they at least got partial credit of their building permit fee back. 127 of the applicants actually did receive the full benefit, meaning they got 100% of it back, essentially meaning they had a HERS slash ERI score of 55 or less. So, and all that was over $90,000 in permit fees that had been credited back as of March. So, I think, all things considered, it's been pretty good, pretty good success in that regard. I won't spend quite as much time on this slide. I kind of briefed you a little bit earlier about how codes were adopted in the state of Oklahoma. Now, a tweak to that is, part of the last adoption process the state went through, it was consideration of the 2018 codes. As a part of that, there was a huge push to update the energy codes at the state level. At that time, the commission chose to take a pass. They kind of kicked the can down the road, frankly. They didn't update the code, but what they did do was they created a technical committee to consider the energy codes. And so, that, it may sound hollow, but for a lot of folks that have done energy code advocacy, it was considered a big gain that the state would even consider an energy code being recognized by the state. So, they did create this technical committee. This Technical Committee on Energy Codes is meeting right now. Their first meeting was back on May 12th, and they'll continue to meet over the next couple of months, you know, at the state level, considering, you know, updating the code, not just for Norman, but for the entire state. The code they have chosen to adopt, excuse me, is the 2018, or the reviewing is the 2018, excuse me, 2015 International Energy Code, 2015. And just fast forwarding to the end, best case scenario is if this technical committee gets the code adopted they want, it would, again, it'd go through the process of legislator, governor's desk. By the very earliest, it would come to life as a state minimum standard, would be the spring of 2022. So, all that to say, and why did I find that important? Well, as we're looking at this program, the program's inception, we had a benchmark set of 65, and that was based on above code program, really, as it compared to the 2009. And so, if you look at these numbers on this slide here, you'll see that 100 is considered the benchmark for an ERI score. And that was the code, the energy code, if you will, back in 2006. The lower the number, the actual more efficient the home is. So, again, so, the city of Norman current program was rewarding people for building it at a 65, which, when we adopted it three years ago, that was, you know, a pretty good benchmark, especially when you're looking at the 2012 code and the 2009 code. Well, the code the, this technical committee is reviewing right now is the 2015. And that 2015 code has a benchmark of a 51. And so, that was a little bit of a note because I think we'd all agree that we wouldn't want to adopt in a program for a year or a couple of years and then have the state come behind us and mandate that a home be built to a higher standard than what we were incentivizing people. So, with that, we do recommend that we update our ERI score. So, currently, it was 65. We felt like it would be prudent to update it to the 51. This is put it in line with the 2015 or 21 codes that are being reviewed at the state level right now. At the program's inception back in 2018, the benchmark was, again, kind of backdated to reference a code that was three years old at that point. And so, this is kind of keeping in line with that process as we move it forward. You know, with that higher benchmark, it will be interesting. Again, you know, the initial thought is it will be harder for people to comply, and the answer to that has to be, well, yes, it will be. It's a notably higher standard. We had a good many homes that were in the program that would have actually been eligible for getting a credit at the 51 score. A lot of them that wouldn't, but a good many that certainly were. I think it was something like 32 or 3% of the homes in, as of March, would have still been eligible. So, looking at it on paper, kind of what the scale looks like currently, again, the column on the left shows our benchmarks now to 65. They get 50% of their permit fee. When they go down to 55, they can get 100% credit. If we do the update as recommended, the 51 would get you the 50% permit fee, and the 41 would get you the full credit. So, again, it is a higher standard, and, you know, we might find, might find as we move through this that, you know, that we set a really tough goal, and if we do, then we'll have learned it. And one of the last things I put in that last slide was, one thing we should consider with this program, especially if we want to make it a long-term program, is doing some form of studying to see what we're really doing, right? So, we set these benchmarks on paper, you know, then the code will move them, and that's certainly a good guide. But another good guide, and a lot of people who do, you know, incentive-based programs, they create local benchmarks. So, most of your utility companies, if they're going to put in an energy code program, they actually give study. They do some sampling of existing homes that are not in a program and establish, okay, well, what is being built? We might find that this 51, especially if the state didn't adopt it, was way too high of a standard, or maybe it's right where it needs to be. So, I would definitely encourage, you know, especially with thinking about this long-term, you know, establishing this community benchmark, at least initially, to help us moving forward and make a really good educated choice about what a good ERI might be. And again, the only thing I had, and again, it's kind of repetitive to the visibility, is the permit fee credit is, again, based on the 14 cents of footage under roof of a home. And that's also the program incentive here as well.
Councilwoman.
So, just to be clear, we would be bringing this in line with what we think the state is going to change the rules to. And if they didn't, we could either leave it or readjust if we felt necessary.
Right, we're taking a best guess, right? What the committee is going to do and then what might ultimately happen. And it's just kind of an educated guess. So, I mean, I could definitely see them at the state level making that higher. I can't see them making it lower, right?
Sure.
And I just, I felt more comfortable setting it somewhere where, you know, we wouldn't get in the situation where we're incentivizing something that would, the standard, you know, would... We don't, we don't really, we don't really know is the honest answer.
And if the state adopts these, that minimum threshold would be 51 by state law.
If they, if they just adopt what they're reviewing as written, yes. If they just say, yes, we're going to take this, no changes, we'll keep this.
Okay, and did we have very many in the program that would have qualified for the 41%?
Not many. I'll just be honest, not many. I can pull that up real quick on this laptop. I believe there was, again, it was about 30% that would have qualified as 51 to get the 50% credit. In terms of the 41, I'll be honest with you, I think it was only like a number of two or three. It was, it was a small number, frankly. Again, as part of the pilot program to see if, is our incentive enough to motivate, you know? It's this incentive to push them to actually strive for that 41. I don't know that it is, but certainly, I could see some doing so.
That's a lot lower threshold, so maybe nobody's really attempted to try to...
Well, if you don't set the bar, I mean...
Actively get there, yeah, right.
Yeah, frankly, we had, now, we had a number of 42s, but as of, again, as of March, I only actually see one that would have got to 41.
So, there were some at 42, though?
There was a number at 42.
A building official would know just because he's in the field all the time, but I'm watching construction projects that, you know, they're halfway through a subdivision, and in the earlier homes, some of the things the developers will build include a radiant barrier, roof sheathing, and it's kind of aluminum foil looking on the inside. It really keeps your attic temperature down, and you score a lot of brownie points when you get your HERS rating. In houses they're building today, they're not using that roof sheathing. And when I asked the builder, what happened? And he said, I can't get that anymore, so I either don't build or I build with what I can find in the current construction materials shortage. So, that's really having an impact on anybody's ability to achieve a better score.
It certainly impacted. I mean, there are little things, you know, I didn't have it studied all, every applicant or anywhere near, but I have kind of audited a few of them just to satisfy my kind of curiosity. And, you know, some of the features that, you know, make big differences is little things like slab insulation. Some builders put insulation in the exterior walls and some don't. And there's quite a few points you can score just by putting insulation there. Certainly appliances, you know, energy, if you're putting in more energy efficient furnaces, water heaters, you get a lot of points for those as well, so.
How are we quantifying the impact on the environment?
Wow.
A canyon, I mean...
I mean, there are, and so, all these scored programs, when you get, when you study and look at the report, they do give you benchmarks.
Okay.
Not necessarily, in the reports we see, they don't necessarily translate them into, you know, a lot of the measurables we see in the energy world, but they generally do like kilowatt-hours, right? So, there are, there are impacts on those reports that you can look at and say, okay, this home is achieving, you know, it's using this much less wattage annually. So, there is, and it shows a cost, generally, they break it down by like cost savings to the owner, right? Like this is, this is a feature to you, but that also translates into less, less energy for the grid itself.
I'd be curious about that in terms of our Ready For 100 initiatives. So, and as we're studying, if there's a way to put some numbers behind that, of course, as a homeowner, I would love, you know, lower bills and energy efficiency, but from a city perspective, I want to see how this is paying off with our efforts to be more sustainable.
Right, my father-in-law's, our HERS engineering, does that kind of homework, so I'll ask him if he can calculate that for us in a format that'll fit in with the Ready For 100 goals established by council in terms of tons of CO2 we can reduce by, you know, more homes that we build in that fashion.
That'd be awesome. Councilor Feacock, you had to hand up a second ago.
Yeah, you briefly touched on this. Do we think that incentive is enough to get people to do the program? Because, I mean, as like Councilor, City Manager Pyle was explaining, you know, radiant roof barriers, wall insulation, slab insulation, I assume this stuff costs more than $348 per house. So, I mean, I think, you know, I'm just wondering if there's enough of incentive there to actually get it successful.
And so, to answer your question, it's, I mean, if the goal of the builder was just, you know, just no is probably the answer, right? Like if it was just, that was the only...
Purely profit, right.
But, you know, there are lots of variable markets.
There are.
There are other programs that come and go, so sometimes they can double dip, right? So, there, sometimes our program could be, you know, more icing on the cake for an existing program, either federal, state, and those have a tendency to come, they have a tendency to go, depending on the, depending on the winds at the time. And so, sometimes it would be more of a sweep. So, I mean, there's also, you do have to remember, there is a minimum code standard, too, right? So, if they're, they're still having to build, you know, a home outside the program, they still have to build it to kind of...
Sure, sure.
So, you know, and it's a pretty good, you know, I've always been told from builders that if nothing, there's a lot of people, it's good market.
Well, I was just about to say that, yeah, yeah.
They want the, they want the notoriety, they want that. They want, they want the notoriety, they want that, so from that perspective too, yeah, when they put that sticker on their panel demonstrating compliance
Absolutely.
And that customer, the report saying this is how much you're saving, I mean, so, again, I don't, if it was just our credit in a vacuum, I mean, probably wouldn't be enough, but I, our credit is one of many, many variables.
No, I think that makes sense.
And so, as a variable, it's a positive, right?
Councilor Trump?
Somewhat related, and I don't know if you have another answer to it or not, but City Manager Pilemate, in the past, we've had issues with solar install due to the state statutes, and apparently other communities haven't had this problem, but we have, and that's been exacerbated in other areas in town, which is a sidebar issue in itself, but I'm wondering if those solar install issues have been remedied at this point.
He had to go take care of something real quick, I'm sorry.
Right, you know, so, I'll be honest, I'm the new Development Services Manager, as of four or five months. I haven't had, I haven't personally had anyone come to my desk and outwardly complain about the solar installs, I do know that early on there was some difficulty, a lot, a lot of what we were dealing with is, a lot of the solar installers are not licensed electricians, and so there's this, there's this gap there between, you know, an electrician and a solar installer, and so I think, I think we've been working with them, but I'm not, I can't, I can't 100% answer your question, so they've all been worked on.
The only reason I would say is because it seems to me they kind of fall under the RF 100, and I know it's not part of the hers program, but if they're interested in that kind of energy-efficient home, that perhaps, and especially the environmental impacts, that that would be something that we would potentially have the option of giving further incentives, like, so, if you do hers plus solar install, something like that, that we could, I'm definitely supportive of adding incentives, and if you wanted to build on the program in a RF 100 kind of way
Right.
Perhaps that might be an avenue to do so, because right now the federal incentives are quite generous.
Are they, right.
And on the appliance, the hers rated appliances as well, so, if, I would just like, if we could continue to maybe make a tiered program, have a hers plus, and how that'd be with, working with local solar installers.
You know, we don't see a new construction, I don't see, maybe they do it after the fact, I don't see a lot of solar going in in new construction. It's usually a retrofit scenario, like existing, existing home that doesn't, I guess, I say that because right now our fees are obviously for a brand-new home are much more robust than what they'd be if it was just a simple solar program.
I don't know about in Norman specifically, I haven't looked into that for brand-new construction, but I know that nationwide, we are seeing with new construction, quite a bit of battery backup and solar install
Right.
Because of weather, so it's something that can really help the community as well, you know, to not be so susceptible to outages.
I mean, I could, I could see a program where they, I mean, I'm kind of thinking to myself here, so if someone was going to put in a solar, they were probably already, they're probably already building a really energy-efficient home, right?
Yeah, but it doesn't change that if the, if the power goes out, you're out of power.
Fair, fair, so I'm
And not having, you know, a lot of the, if you're on OEC, then you can have the rollback on your bill during peak time of, when you're sharing energy with your neighbors, from what you're generating yourself, so, anyway, it was just a kind of planting a bug of maybe how to
I appreciate that.
How to build on the program.
And we are kind of looking, and when we get to code updates and adoptions, there'll be some things that I've already kind of thought about on solar that would, would help us, help the community in terms of some, some of what I think you were talking about with challenges with permitting and all that.
That's great.
I won't say it will 100% solve, solve the issue, because there will always be one, but I think we can find some ways to make it a little bit user-friendly, more user-friendly.
Thank you. Councilor Hall, do you have a question?
Well, I just wanted to circle back just about the comment of, you know, these are all incremental pieces of a much bigger picture, and I just am so glad that we're moving forward in this direction and that we're taking this incrementally to, you know, a different level of incentive that's consistent with what you're expecting at the state level, so not, the fact that we don't have that many that are in that 41, 42 range, that's really not been a benchmark quite yet, so it'll be interesting to see how that works out, and then, just to your point, I feel like that just having that, there's some value to having that rating over and above, you know, the incentive with the, with the building fee, because I think there are a lot of people that are positioning themselves now, getting in the home market maybe for the first time, or looking to make changes that are looking for these kinds of, you know, amenities and a nod to having a more sustainable home, so, I think, I think it's probably market-driven a little bit too, because I think most people would see it as a plus to a purchase that they're thinking about making compared to maybe a home that doesn't have any of that, so, like that. And then, I also noticed that you had included a comment about money, to make money available to do the study that you were suggesting, do we have, have we talked about that, or is that included in anything, or is that something we need to think about, or?
I mean, it's not, we brought it up at the last, at the last meeting, but it wasn't, at this point, it's not codified in the resolution
Okay.
Anywhere to have an allocation for that, just to make it candid, I was more just planting a bug
Yeah.
At work, you know, as this discussion goes, and this is a pilot program
Right.
And I viewed it as a pilot program, so
Yeah.
I wasn't terribly concerned about that, just, other than I felt like it'd be good to put the bug out there, so when we're here, a year from now, having this discussion, especially if the thought is, you know, why don't let's implement this long-term, you know, maybe the thoughts have been put there, and maybe we, if that is the thought, we can go ahead and proceed with, with a benchmark-type program to help establish what, what we're really doing.
So I just want to put, you know, put the bookmark there too, that, that I like about moving in, just as a pilot and continuing to extend this, is that we don't want to miss the opportunity to evaluate as we go, so, just to make sure we've all got it on our radar screen that may, that may need a funding source down the road, so I'm glad you mentioned it, yeah.
So, the thought of how such a program affects affordability, and that's the delicate balance, council always has to weigh that, yes, some of those features do cost more, but over time, the cost of those building materials does come down in comparison to, you know, the old standard, and as the entire state moves that way, manufacturers will just manufacture less of the old stuff and more of the new stuff, making it more cost-competitive, and we look at affordable housing in a couple of different venues, what is the purchase price of the house, whether it's, you know, a homeowner or a future renter, and then the, the cost to live in it, and, yeah, it may cost a little bit more upfront, but the life cost of that house could be reduced dramatically by a code change that would just get us to a 41, holy smokes.
Yeah, pretty incredible.
And I think that's really what we're all aiming for, yeah. So, the other comment, I ask this all the time, I know we have this, we're in this funny bubble of supply chain issues and, you know, increased construction costs and all that, any guesses on six months, 18 months, we have any idea, because I'm, I'm hoping it's temporary?
I mean, this is not, this is just what I heard last.
Yeah.
I've heard that we could be looking at this for as long as 18 more months.
Okay.
That's how many more?
18.
Okay.
Councilor Pecock?
You know, Darryl made a really good point about affordability, and I think this program has a lot of alignment with another program that the county passed recently, and that's PACE, Property-Assessed Clean Energy, and it's basically where you agree to tax yourselves over an extended period to finance energy improvements, so I don't know what the alignment is with this program, but I think there's some real, some real dovetailing there that we can take advantage of.
We're speed into that kind of trade-off, if you will, that does tend to occur with a lot of these type of credits, is again, we're not trying to fund all of it ourselves, but we're trying to contribute.
And how we can help existing homeowners achieve greater scores if they were to go in and have an older home, hers upgraded with new ductwork, new windows, new roofing material as well as solar. We're working on a study session on the C-PACE program, right now it's commercial only, but we know the legislature has been briefed on an opportunity to get rid of the C and make it available for residential, commercial, and industrial purposes, so we're working on a group of presenters out of Tulsa, where the idea first happened here in Oklahoma, and hope to have that to you early, by early August.
That kind of leads into my question, you know how CDBG funds can be used to build a ramp or make a home accessible, when are we going to get to the point where CDBG funds can be used to do that, to make their home energy efficient? And I'm sure OG and he's probably got something out there, but it'd be neat if we could provide it, because it is a cost savings and can also help, you know, we hear about people dying of heat exposure and also
So, the thought for us to continue to hint at with our legislature, I drafted legislation in California to expand PACE financing to include things like ADA accessibility, you may have a commercial building downtown two or three stories, but back in the day, they didn't have elevators, and now in order to use the second floor, you got to put in an elevator, and man, that's another $89,000, but I think it's a great thing to start to share with our legislators to say, why don't you just add a couple more pieces, it's still property-assessed, the loan is still secured by the real property, and I think you could really add value to a lot of our older buildings in town getting that done, so, happy to, yeah, work on that.
It's a great idea.
Then, my last question, when do we get rid of pilot? I mean, it sounds like this is the program, can we just call it the hers program, or does it have to be a pilot? I feel like we're long-term planning here, we're trying to be clear.
Well, so, I mean, this is something that was anticipated to ultimately be codified and could be codified, I think the reason we're taking a left turn here is because of the dramatic change that we wanted to see in the score, to see if it can be incentivized further and see the response, plus, there was a little bit of the hesitation about, when this got running, we really didn't see a way, or I guess we didn't have a way to measure, and Mr. Clark has thought of a way to go try to get some data that maybe we can put in place and get it a little more solid, but, yes, eventually a pilot program does need to find its home, or at least it's to be a pilot.
That makes sense, though. Any other questions for Mr. Clark?
Just want to make a comment about the visibility, moving that forward, I really appreciate all the work that you did on the backside, because the ad hoc committee was sort of creating their, you know, inventing the wheel when we already had a path that aligned with that quite nicely, so, appreciate you bringing that forward and just the work to get it to where it is now, and I'm really looking forward to moving along on that one.
Say, all right, well, thank you, sir, all right, I'll see you all at 6:30 in the chambers.
Okay, thank you.
Fail now.
Is that starting tonight?
Yeah.
I appreciate it. I thought it was going to happen after the swearing-in of the
Nope, tonight.
Tonight, okay. Okay.